...the glare off our heads.
Not me, I have mine.
All right, whenever you want.
Five seconds.
Okay.
Three, two, one, go.
We'll call to order the Beach Grove Board of Zoning Appeals. And we'll have a start out with introduction of our board members. I'm Rick Greenfield.
Diana Hendricks.
I'm Joseph Hag.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer for the city.
We'll pass the reading and approval of the minutes to the end of the meeting. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone that's going to actually be speaking today? Okay, good. All right, so no need to swear in. We have a petition that's coming up. Let me get the...
Okay, it's right here.
Okay, it's petition number 2014-UVB-005 regarding 405 North Seventeenth Street. Wade and Sowers on this. The City of Indianapolis has recommended approval of the zoning variance. Is there any comments from the board?
Should we read in the rules of procedure?
Yeah.
Or are we gonna bypass that?
Let's do that. Okay, we'll read the rules of procedure. The proceedings of this hearing are governed by the board's rules of procedure. Petitioners and persons appearing in support of the case being heard shall have a maximum of fifteen minutes for the presentation of evidence, statements, and arguments in support of the petition. Any person who desires to speak and provide testimony during today's hearing must first complete the sign-in slip located on the table in the back of the room. This slip must be presented to the board president before you provide your testimony. Remonstrators and persons appearing in opposition of the petition shall have a maximum of fifteen minutes for the presentation of evidence, statements, and arguments in opposition to the petition. Staff will then present the administrators' comments regarding the petition. The petitioner will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal and a summation of the case. Rebuttal must be limited to the subject matter of the initial presentations. Remonstrators will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal of the petitioner's rebuttal evidence and a brief closing statement. No further evidence, statements, or arguments will be heard unless it is at the discretion of the board. Please limit your testimony and evidence to the matters covered in the statutory requirements which must be met in order for the board to grant a variance. If the petitioners have failed to comply with all notice requirements as stipulated by the board's rules of procedure, including posting of the notice, placard, and the subject property at least twenty-three days prior to the hearing, the board may continue the petition. Anyone at this hearing who thinks complete and proper notices has not been given and would like the petition continued to lack of proper notice must bring this matter to the board's attention at the beginning of the hearing. The board may impose various conditions as amendments before reaching a decision on certain petitions. The installation of landscaping and screenings, the paving of parking areas, and the dedication of rights-of-way are examples of such conditions. These conditions are an integral part of the board's decision and must be met for a granted variance to be valid. Every decision of the Beach Grove Board of Zoning Appeals shall be subject to judicial review. Such petition for judicial review shall be presented to the court within thirty days after the decision of the board. Please be courteous and orderly at all times, and please be sure all cell phone ringers are turned off. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions about the procedures? Okay, we'll open it up for comments, staff. Do you wanna speak on this?
I'm sorry?
You wanna speak on this?
On this case?
Uh-huh.
You're not having the petitioner come up first?
They have declined to do so.
Are there any remonstrators here?
No remonstrators.
Okay. For your record, Linda Allbran with City of Indianapolis Department of Metropolitan Development. Unfortunately for the petitioner, we have several instances like this around Marion County where the property is owned commercially but has always been used residentially. They're not the only ones. We have this all over the county. But our ordinance does not guarantee rebuild of property unless a variance is sought and granted. And that's what they're needing for, to sell the property or to get refinancing. This happens a lot. We can confirm that it has been a dwelling since at least the 1930s. And the C1 zoning, we believe, was a carryover from when we took over from Beach Grove, the countywide zoning maps, but we don't know why. It's always been Zone C1. We are recommending approval, of course, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions. At this point, I think we're looking for a motion, aren't we?
I'd like to make a motion that case number 2014-UVB-CO05 be approved upon the recommendations that the variance petition, subject to the site plan filed dated October 2nd, 2014, is carried out. Yes.
Does that make sense to everybody, what she's saying? Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay. Full vote?
So, congratulations. I think that's all they need to do today.
Yep, your variance will be granted, and I don't know, how did we pick that up, Dan?
Linda, you'll send a letter to us, and then we send one to them, is that correct? On the petition?
I'm gonna send some wording that they're going to need for paperwork this afternoon, and then you'll put it on my letterhead and get it signed.
Okay.
And Linda, could you also connect with the selling agent over here? Because there's a pending closing, and I know that time is really of the essence on these, and just get it directly to her as well.
Well, that would be coming from your office.
Okay. Yeah, as soon as I get that, I can put it on my letterhead.
I can get it to her, you know, by probably three o'clock this afternoon.
Okay. It should be available first thing in the morning, then.
Okay.
Okay. The only other thing we'd like to do is go through some previous minutes and get them approved, because we keep putting them off from month to month.
And we can dismiss these folks, right? So, you guys can go. You're free to go.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll try to go through these real quick. Beach Grove Board of Zoning Appeals, Wednesday, February 5th, 2014, meeting minutes. Rick Greenfield called the meeting to order at 1:00 p.m. Due to lack of quorum, the meeting will be continued to 8:00 p.m. Rick Greenfield reopened the meeting at 8:00 p.m. Roll call. Attending were board members Rick Greenfield, Diana Hendricks, Kathy Arsenault, and Clerk Treasurer Dan McMillan. Reading of minutes we did not do. Rules of procedure. Dan McMillan read the rules of procedure and swearing those giving testimony at the meeting. Continued petitions, none. New petitions, 5621 Elmwood Avenue, Beach Grove. Brian Tuohy, attorney for the petitioner. Mike Hoffman, the Marine Senator. Petitioners requested a variance of use and development standards of the industrial zoning ordinances to provide for boat recreational vehicle display and sales, which was not permitted, with outdoor storage within 500 feet of a protected district. In an amount greater than fifty percent of the gross floor area of the existing building, maximum of fifty percent of the gross area of the building permitted. The petitioner stated they had sent out fifty-one notices, and not one property owner came back with any negative comments to the proposed use. Remonstrators, none. Staff recommended approval of the petition, subject to site plan filed that was dated December 31st, 2013, to filing two commitments. One, there shall be no stacking of both stored or displayed outdoors. Number two, storage and display shall be limited to the paved area as shown on the site plan. This was approved, and what I'd like to do is get a motion for approval of this set of minutes.
I'll motion.
All right.
Approval.
I think Mr. Hag, he bumped his head, so he's second.
Joe's second. Okay, all in favor, say by aye.
Aye.
All right. Beach Grove Board of Zoning Appeals, Wednesday, July 3rd, 2013, meeting minutes. Julie Weaver called the meeting to order at 1:07. Roll call. Attending board members were Rick Greenfield, Julie Weaver, Kathy Arsenault, and Joe Hag. Also in attendance were Clerk Treasurer Dan McMillan and BZA Attorney Sonia Cedar. Reading of minutes. Clerk Treasurer Dan McMillan read the minutes into the March 16th, 2013 meeting. There were no meetings in April, May, or June. A motion to approve the minutes, as read, was made by Julie Weaver and seconded by Rick Greenfield. The motion was approved by unanimous voice vote. Rules of procedure. Clerk Treasurer Dan McMillan read the rules of procedure, swearing in the witnesses. Sonia Cedar, BZA attorney, swearing the witnesses. New petitioners, 2013-DVB-002 Checkers Restaurant rallies. Allen Industries, A1 Expeditors, 4420 South Emerson Avenue. Alexander Solanke, variance of development standards of the signed regulations to legally establish a seventy-eight-foot-tall freestanding sign located 180 feet from another freestanding sign along Interstate 465. Maximum forty-foot-tall sign per minimum, minimum 300-foot separation from another freestanding sign required. And a thirty-foot-tall freestanding sign with a zero-foot setback from the right-of-way of South Emerson Avenue located 74 feet from another freestanding sign, minimum fifteen-foot setback required, minimum 300-foot separation from another freestanding sign required. Remonstrators, none. Recommendation of staff. Linda Allbran of Department of Metropolitan Development Planning recommends approval. Rick Greenfield made a motion to accept the variance for 4420 South Emerson, 2013-DVB-002. Joe Hag seconded the motion, which was approved by a three-to-one vote. 2013-DVB-003 Franciscan, St. Francis Health. Monty Hopkins, Sign Solutions. Roger Barxdale, St. Francis Health. Request of development standards of the signed regulations to provide for a fourteen-point-sixty-seven-foot-tall freestanding sign located 50 feet from another proposed freestanding sign along Churchman Avenue. Maximum four-foot-tall sign permitted, minimum 600 feet of front, which require for two freestanding signs. Remonstrators, none. Recommended staff. Linda Allbran of Department of Metropolitan Development Planning recommends approval. Rick Greenfield made a motion to approve a variance for 2030 Churchman Avenue, 2013-DVB-003. Joe Hag seconded the motion, which was approved by a four-o vote. The board discussed the nomination for president of the board and decided to wait until all members were present to vote on this. Adjournment. Rick Greenfield made a motion to adjourn. Julie Weaver seconded the motion, which approved by unanimous voice vote. The meeting was adjourned at 1:33. Next meeting will be August 7th, 2013, 1:00 at City Hall Council Chambers. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that set of minutes? Rick?
Yep.
I'll second.
Diane? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I think I've got one more.
We're catching up, aren't we?
Yeah. This one's a little bit longer, so excuse me on that. Beach Grove Board of Zoning Appeals, Wednesday, September 4th, 2013, meeting minutes. Rick Greenfield called the meeting to order. Rules of procedure. Clerk Treasurer Dan McMillan read the rules of procedure, swearing in of the witnesses. Sonia Cedar, BZA, swearing the witnesses. One witness was late, and Sonia Cedar swore her in when she arrived. Roll call. Attending board members Joe Hag, Kathy Arsenault, Diana Hendricks, and Rick Greenfield. Also in attendance were Clerk Treasurer Dan McMillan and BZA Sonia Cedar, attorney. Julie Weaver was absent. New petitions, 2013-UVB-005. No one was in attendance to represent petition number 2013-UVB-005, so the board moved on to the next petition. Petitioners Donald Down, Claudia K. Griffin. Property is currently Zone CID and I2U, address 5342 East Elmwood Avenue. Petitioners are requesting a variance of development standards of the industrial zoning ordinance to provide for gravel parking area for semi-cab truck parking where pavement is required. Mike Quinn, attorney representing the petitioners, advised that the petitioners would like to amend their petition to be for a five-year temporary variance as recommended by the zoning staff. The property is not hazardous or injurious to the welfare of the community. It is over three and a half acres and has been an industrial park for many years. The tenants wish to expand its use and employment possibility. They want to be able to park their trucks, tractors, not the trailers, on the property. If not allowed, the tenants would probably relocate because their home office is in Iowa. This is a regional office, and his clients wish to accommodate the tenants. The trucks are allowed to be there. This is a variance of development standards, not a variance of use. The petitioners have an office on the property, and the property is very clean and well-kept. All the streets in the area are paved. This would be the only gravel area, and is due to the type of vehicles they would like to park there. The petitioner, Mr. Griffin, has also looked at the drainage problems that could happen by gravel part of the area. There is a catch basin, and all the drainage would drain to this catch basin, go into the pipe, and that would go west to the next street to the west. The evidence would not be supportive of a hard surface. If the vehicle's wheels are turned, they would dig into any hard surface, and it would have to be replaced or repaired. It would be easy to replace gravel as necessary. Again, as the property is owned for the use, the outside storage is permitted. They respectfully request the board to approve this request for variance. Questions from board member Joe Hag stated he would go along with the gravel, but he is afraid the catch basin would be used to dump oil or contaminants into, and also asked if they serviced the vehicles there. Mr. Quinn stated they have their own servicing mechanic on-site. They are the largest refrigerated truck company in the country. Kathy Arsenault asked if the area is grass now, when gravelled, would the vehicles be serviced on the gravel? Mr. Quinn stated that it is grass now, and they would be converting it to gravel. They would not be serviced on the gravel. There is a service building across the street. Kathy Arsenault wants to know how the drainage would work. Mr. Quinn stated there is an existing culvert there that the parking lot would go around. All the drainage would go into the culvert and out to the west. Mr. Quinn also stated if the request is granted, the client would still have to get a permit to put in the gravel. At that time, the Department of Public Works and City of Beach Grove will look at the drainage problems and make sure it can handle it before issuing the permit. Kathy Arsenault asked if they will start the large rock gravel and work up to smaller gravel. Mr. Quinn stated yes, and it may even be better than the gravel, but gravel is what they will start with. Diana Hendricks asked if there is a thickness code for the gravel. Mr. Griffin said they are talking about using four to five inches of number-two rock, and an extra three inches will be rock size number 53. There will be a total of seven to eight inches. Diana Hendricks wants to know if there will be some kind of border put up to keep the gravel on the drive. Mr. Griffin stated this question has not come up, and as far as he knows, this is not an issue. He does not want gravel beyond the parking lot so they will be able to cut the grass. They are open to any suggestions the board has of how to make a border. Diana Hendricks asked at the staff if there was any requirements for gravel to keep the rock from spreading. Linda Allbran said she is unaware of this requirement in the code. Diana Hendricks asked if they would consider putting some type of border. Mr. Quinn stated they can make that condition of the variance. The parking area will be properly bordered to prevent gravel from escaping off the parking area. Remonstrators, Michael O'Brien, clinical psychologist, offices to the west of the Griffin property at 5336 Elmwood. Mr. O'Brien does not feel the tenant is a good fit for that part of Elmwood Avenue. To the east and west of Mr. Griffin's property is residential. Mr. O'Brien's office is a professional office and very quiet, and he needs quiet to conduct his business, which consists of IQ tests, psychological testing, developmental delay testing, et cetera. Semi-tractor trailers going in and out all day is a disruption to his business. It is his understanding that Mr. Griffin is putting the cart before the horse by asking for this variance. There are already semi-tractors and trailers on the property, and feels he should ask for the variance before this. The presence of the gravel and dry parts of the property will cause dust to cross into Mr. O'Brien's property. The noise in empty trailers could be an attraction for varmints and vagrancy, and is afraid they could cause damage to his property at night. The property is rented by a lot of residential property and does not think we should add more businesses. He is upset because Mr. Griffin's tenants are not respectful of his property and always walk through his yard and leave trash on his property. Last week, someone relieved himself in the bushes attached to his yard. If the variance is granted, he thinks it should include a privacy fence and along the border between Mr. Griffin's property and his to minimize the problem of Mr. Griffin's tenants coming into his yard. Joe Hag asked Mr. O'Brien if the property is one. They granted a variance for setback issues after the pavement was already completed. Mr. O'Brien stated yes, but unlike Mr. Griffin, he was aware that the need to obtain approval along those lines, he was ignorant of the law but did rectify it. Kathy Arsenault asked where is located proportion to Mr. Griffin's property. Mr. O'Brien stated his is exactly to the west. They share a property line. Kathy Arsenault asked if he owns the building or was renting, and asked if a privacy fence was required, could they share the expense? Mr. O'Brien stated he owns the property and said the issue is with Mr. Griffin's tenants getting on his property, not with Mr. O'Brien's employees. He does not feel he should have to cover any of the expenses. Diana Hendricks asked how much traffic is going on during the day now. Mr. O'Brien stated they are new tenants, and he only sees a couple every hour, but if they are granted the variance, then the traffic could be multiplied. Diana Hendricks asked if the privacy fence would help with the noise and traffic. Mr. O'Brien does not feel it will resolve the situation but would reduce some of the noise. Mr. O'Brien did want to know if he left, could he put his response to the rebuttal in writing? Rick Greenfield stated no, not after today. Mr. O'Brien decided to stay. Remonstrator number two, Donna Ward, residence located at 4127 South Butler Avenue, which is west of Mr. Griffin's property. Ms. Ward stated her property is directly behind Mr. Griffin, and every time it rains, the rain goes onto her property and causes plumbing issues and her toilets to back up. If he is allowed to put anything on his property, she does want it to be gravel. Mr. Griffin was never supposed to have any pavement, and also, he was supposed to plant pine trees all along the property line. Ms. Ward has a privacy fence now, but the water from Mr. Griffin's property has caused her fence to lean. She does not have the money to replace her fence. Every time there are trucks at night, their lights shine right into her house. Ms. Ward is also concerned about all the dust these trucks will bring. It is a small area, and the semis are going to drop oil and will run back to the back of her property. Also, his gutters face her property, so all the rain falls on the property. Kathy Arsenault asked if she owned the house before Mr. Griffin moved in. Ms. Ward responded she has lived there her entire life. Kathy Arsenault asked if Mr. Griffin put up a privacy fence, would that help with the drainage? Ms. Ward thinks if he had a fence and put it on the same property line as her neighbor's fence, there would be space between the fences, so something would still have to be done. Ms. Ward does not think his property should have any blacktop, and she is concerned that after five years would then ask for more pavements. Kathy Arsenault thinks maybe Mr. Griffin could build something behind a privacy fence to divert the water. If Mr. Griffin put up a privacy fence, could they put some kind of swell with some piping, which could run the water a different direction? Also, is his property on the higher ground than her property? Ms. Ward stated his blacktop is slanted to come to her property, so it's much higher. Kathy Arsenault asked if they were on a septic. Ms. Ward said all the homes in the area are on a septic. Diana Hendricks asked how long his gutters have faced her property, and has there been an increase of water issues since he moved there? Ms. Ward said the gutters have faced her property since the building was built, and there has been a big increase in the water issues since he moved there. Her toilets now back up, and they never had that issue before. The property cannot hold the water that falls on her property along with his water. Kathy Arsenault asked how old Ms. Ward's finger system was, because in the picture it does not look like the gravel will be adjoining her property. If the gravel area is not close to her property, then it will not change the water issues. Ms. Ward is not sure how old the system is. She does not have a problem with the gravel. It is more of what could happen in the future. She knows the gravel will absorb the water, but if he gets approval later to have pavement, then there will be a real issue. Kathy Arsenault did let Ms. Ward know if he did that in the future, he would have to come to the zoning board again to get approval. Remonstrator number three, Paula and Robert Riedel, residence located at 4119 Butler Avenue located on Northwest Corner of Mr. Griffin's property. Ms. Riedel stated that the semis did shine in her window at night, but Mr. Griffin has addressed the issue, and she is thankful to him for handling that issue. She also has water issues and thinks the gravel will cause the water to come across her property into the ditch in front of her house. She thinks the oil will also be a problem and wants a guarantee that the oil will not come to her property. Mr. Riedel said that the diesel trucks do lose fluid, and they are now getting contamination from them. He is also wondering if anyone from the city is monitoring the situation. This water goes down one of the neighbor's yards, comes down to a ditch, and then to their ditch, and finally, it goes to the main drain. Mr. Riedel stated Mr. Griffin only installed a 12-inch pipe and is not sure it is big enough to accommodate the drainage, and thinks someone needs to look into this and see where it is draining. Mrs. Riedel does not think a privacy fence will help, because the water has already caused their fence to fall. They have reset it a second time, two feet with double bags of cement, and still starting to lean again. Mr. Riedel also said that when they dug down two feet, there was water in the ground. That tells them all the water is going to their property. Their daughter owns a house right behind this property, and you can see where the water actually dug in and is eating away at the ground. They worry about cement tracks going across the gravel and what it's going to do with the dirt that is already there. They do not want the ground to go lower and do not want any more water coming on their property. They just want to make sure their concerns are on record. Remonstrator number four, Cassandra Nickel, residence located at 5354 Elmwood Avenue. Her property adjoins with Mr. Griffin's from the beginning to the end with an acre and a quarter of land. Ms. Nickel passed out photographs she has taken and explained what the picture represents. Ms. Nickel was raised on the property, and has been the owner for the last 42 years. She has a list of appeals and grievances for the neighboring property. There has been ongoing harassment for decades involving the town of Beach Grove, Police Department, and the Health Department. When she took possession of the property, Mr. Griffin called the Health Department right away to get them out there for any reason. He called the police about golf cart tire tracks made from his tenants, but had the police at her house. Mr. Griffin has taken it upon himself in the past two weeks to cut down every tree on her property line in half. Ms. Nickel feels he has done that as a form of threat to keep her from attending the zoning meeting. There are photographs of these trees. Ms. Nickel also thinks there should be some form of easement between the two properties because his tenants have created a path across her yard to get from their property to Jackson Systems. She approached the tenants to see why they think it's okay to cross in her yard. They stated it is much quicker and easier. Three of his tenants have made modified race cars and rev their engines at all hours and sometimes as late as 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. The tenants use her property as a playground for their children on the weekends and drive their golf carts through her yard. Rick Greenfield asked Ms. Nickel how her testimony relates to the variance request, and she said she is getting to that. Ms. Nickel stated that the first building Mr. Griffin built was the Carquest, and it was built too close to the property line, was not of code. Mr. Griffin got her father's signature to do this, but her father was not of well mind. Since then, Mr. Griffin has built three more buildings and now wants to put in a gravel parking lot. Has built them all too close to the property, and it's against code. Ms. Nickel personally owns the property by a building that just went up on May 13th of 2013 without a permit. No one asked for permission to build it so close to her property. Ms. Nickel called the Beach Grove Police Department. They advised her that she needed to call the zoning department. She has contacted them and will be filing a grievance because it has taken away the resale value of her property. Ms. Nickel stated if she wants to build anything on her property, she has to build too far from her property line. Mr. Griffin was granted 150 feet, but not 500 feet instead. Rick Greenfield stated he understands Ms. Nickel's concerns, but they need to stick to the variance request. Ms. Nickel asked if they give him approval to do the gravel parking lot will be on her property line. Also, the main drain is in her front yard for the whole neighborhood, so will this cause her yard to set too low and cause more drainage issues? This will cause her property to lose more value. Since Mr. Griffin cut the trees in half, the people from Carquest can see right into our bathroom window. Ms. Nickel... Ms. Nickel personally thinks Mr. Griffin should be responsible for a privacy fence to go through the corner of Car Quest to the corner of her lot. Also, if he takes the gravel above grade, then the runoff will be on her property. Ms. Nickel feels Mr. Griffin does not have enough space to have a fleet of trucks. She has put over a hundred and fifty thousand in her property in the last four years and does not want it to lose value. Sonia Cedar asked Ms. Nichols to show her in the picture where her property line is in proportion to where Mr. Griffin wants to put the gravel parking lot. Sonia Cedar advised Ms. Nichols she needs to mark it in the picture so it can be part of the public record. Kathy Arsenal asked Ms. Nichols what she thought the remedy would be for this variance to make her happy. Ms. Nichols showed on the picture where Mr. Griffin wants to put the gravel to clarify to the board how it impacts her property. Diana Hendricks advised Ms. Nichols to mark on each picture what they represent so they can be part of the public record. They will be marked as A, B, and C, et cetera. Ms. Nickel then pointed out the different pictures and what they represent. The pictures show where Mr. Griffin has built buildings over the property line, and if he puts the gravel parking li- line with the other buildings, then he will be too close to the property line. Ms. Nickel stated he is supposed to be twenty feet from the property line, and this is only about ten feet. Kathy Arsenal did say the twenty feet requirement was for a building, not a driveway. But Ms. Nickel is concerned that if he makes it a parking lot, how long will it be before he puts a building on the line? She is also afraid there will never be enough room to build on her property as a resale value w- will be gone. Kathy Arsenal stated that a state survey needs to be done, and gravel can run right up to the property line. A privacy fence or PCP pipe could be used to make sure the drainage runs properly. Ms. Nichols said the water flow right now is not good, and she had to put two sump pumps in her house. Kathy Arsenal did advise Ms. Nickel that sump pumps are normal. Ms. Nickel also went on to explain that when lines were ran in the eighties, it caused all the water to run to her property. If Mr. Griffin raises his property, then it will stop the natural flow. Kathy Arsenal said that when gravel is put into a muddy area, then the large gravel is placed with pea gravel over it. When they were discussing the size of rocks, they were talking depth, not height. Ms. Nickel just wants to let the board know she has not pleased with the request, and it will lower the value of her property. She is requesting Mr. Griffin put up a fence and not come too close to her property. She has gutted the entire interior and outside of her home and cleaned the property up. Kathy Arsenal believes the request would improve the looks of Ms. Nickel's property according to what the pictures show now. Ms. Nickel stated Mr. Griffin is already doing what he has asked in the variance for. There are two tractor trailers on the property with mice running around in them and does not feel they, that any improvements will happen. Kathy Arsenal did say the approval could be with some conditions. Recommendation by staff. Linda Allbran went over the history of the property, which is included in her staff report. The request is a variance at development standards to allow for gravel parking being there instead of paved. The purpose of requiring paving is to prevent gravel from going out into the streets and destroying it. It is also to prevent dust and noise from impacting adjacent properties. Because Mr. Griffin's property is so far back on the road, staff does not think the argument of gravel going into the street is valid, because it would not make it that far. With regards to it being adjacent to resident property, it is approximately a hundred and thirty feet from the nearest residence zone property, which is to the one to the west, not at the east, and it is three hundred and thirty feet from the dwelling on that lot. Because of the distance of the separation, staff feels gravel would be appropriate. The staff is the one who recommended the five-year temporary variance instead of a permanent variance. It cannot be determined with certainty if the gravel will impact the adjacent properties. It will be impacted by how well it is maintained. From staff's point of view, it is hopeful that it would be paved or another building constructed instead of gravel after a five-year period. The board can determine if more time is needed. At this time, the staff is recommending approval. Questions for the staff. Kathy Arsenal asked for clarification on the distance from the residential property. Linda said it's a hundred and thirty feet from the residential property line to the west and three hundred and thirty feet to the dwelling on the property. She did not measure the property to the east, because it is not butting up to the residentially zoned property. Kathy Arsenal asked if the building Mr. Griffin had previously built were approved. Linda Allbran said he could, said she could have been approved for variance all along for the buildings, but she cannot speak to the drainage issue. They would review what they are proposing and make sure the drainage on site could accept the new drainage of, off of the gravel. Kathy Arsenal stated appears he has a large drainage pit on the front of the gravel to catch water and oil. Rick Greenfield asked if Linda Allbran, if there are any properties on Butler Bean Zone Industrial. Linda stated they are residential, except for the back two of the lots, but Linda thinks that is a commercial mapping error. It was inadvertently zoned C-five long ago, and it should not have been. They are all zoned D-three, which is residential. Kathy asked at the area he is parking his truck in now, as in one of the pictures, would be contained in the gravel area. Linda stated he is permitted to now park on the lot anywhere that is already paved or would be gravel. The use of the property is not what the board is considering today. Kathy said some vehicles are parked on the grass, so it will look better for the neighborhood if it is gravel. Rebutts. Mike Quinn wanted to reiterate that the only request before this board is to put down gravel instead of pavement. They can park there now. They just want to expand so they can put more vehicles there. The property next door that Ms. Nichols referring to is zone I-two, which is industrial zoning. Her home is there under a non-conforming use, because it was there illegal when it was a home, so it was rezoned I-two. The footprint of that house cannot be expanded without zoning. He has not seen the pictures, so he cannot comment on them. One of the board members asked if gravel would be bordered to prevent the gravel from traveling. It would be with concrete blocks to prevent the gravel from going off the parking area if the variance is granted. His clients would still have to get permits even with the variance on the drainage. It will be drained downhill from the east to the west. By law, his client has to accept the water that runs his way. The Department of Public Works and the City of Beach Grove will decide how the drains have to run, and Mr. Griffin will abide by that. He understands that the people have issues with the tenants, but that is not what this variance is for. He is again asking for approval of this variance. Thank you. Ms. Nichols stated that the homeowner property was built by Davis Holmes in nineteen sixty-two, and it has only been used as residential since that time. It has never been used for business purpose, but was rezoned to put up for sale. The property is no longer for sale and will only be used as residential. Ms. Riedel would like to, like for Mr. Griffin to put in an easement to keep the water from coming on to their property. Ms. Ward again states she would rather it be gravel whether than pavement, but wants to be sure it will be checked out for oil and other contaminants from running on to her property. Diana Hendricks asked for a motion to grant the variance for fifty-three forty-two Elmwood Avenue with the conditions that there is a property survey completed, if one has not already been done. Also, take into consideration contaminants and containment issues. Privacy issues also need to be in addition. The property owner should consider the neighbors. Rick Greenfield asked Diana Hendricks, as she was requiring a privacy fence, and she said she wants them to consider it. Clerk Treasurer McMillan stated that for the motion, she has to either ask for it as a condition or leave it out. Diana Hendricks stated she would like that to be a condition. Rick Greenfield asked if it would be along all borders, and Diana Hendricks said yes. Joe Hag stated there are two drives, one going in and one coming out, and he thinks it will be a tricky for the tra- trailer drivers to be able to turn around and come back out. The lights will be an issue, especially at night. He really doesn't like bordering areas with privacy fences, but he thinks it would be a good idea in this case that they put the fence down the east and west border. The motion is to grant the variance for fifty-three forty-two Elmwood Avenue with the conditions there is a privacy fence from the setback of Elmwood Avenue along the east and west border. Is that acceptable to the petitioner? Mr. Griffin says no. It is very simple. The trucks will come in to the lot and go out on the other end. Then, they are going out as a building that is high enough to keep the lights from going into the houses. He also wants to explain to Ms. Nickel that he did not call the Board of Health because her grass was too high and it was causing animals to live there. Rick Greenfield did remind Mr. Griffin the reason for the board was meeting today was for a gravel parking lot and not to address their own other issues. Joe Hag made a motion to approve variance petition twenty thirteen DVB dash oh oh six, located at fifty-three forty-two Elmwood Avenue. The parking area is to be gravelled as opposed to asphalt for a temporary period, expiring five years from the date of the variance granted. Diana Hendricks seconded the motion, which was approved by unanimous vote. Rick Greenfield did let Mr. Griffin know he had to agree to the five-year temporary period that staff was recommending, and he said yes, he did. He hopes at the end of the five years, he can get another variance. He will keep the property clean and plowed, whatever is necessary, because he does not want to see his tenants move. If worse comes to worse, he will put up a privacy fence where the gravel is. Rick Greenfield asked Mr. Quinn if he is willing to file the zoning commitment within thirty days. It would be for the temporary five-year agreement. Mr. Quinn will get it signed by Mr. or Mrs. Griffin, get it filed to the record, Recorder's Office, and send a copy to the City of Beach Grove Clerk's Office. Twenty thirteen UVB dash oh oh five ATS ambulance service had their sixty-fifty Churchman bypass. Petitioner Jed Wilson stated it is not zoned for an ambulance company at this time and wants to run an ambulance service. There will not be any hazardous material or heavy machinery. The building has front offices and has an area big enough to hold their trucks. This is an industrial area, so they will not have the negative effects that are in a residential area, including the noise issue. Mr. Wilson did say there is a residence across the street since they are on a corner line, but due to the direction they will be pulling out of the parking lot, the residents should not hear the sirens. The sirens only go off thirty percent of the time, because the majority of their business is for non-emergency. In the future, there could be more emergency runs, but because this is an industrial area, the noise would be muted due to the distance. Mr. Wilson is asking for approval of variance of use of the industrial zoning ordinance to provide for an ambulance service. Joe Hag asked what they would be doing with the pit on the east side where the gravel spot is located. Mr. Wilson stated he would eventually like to pave the gravel, but not at this time. He did state the owners of the building were told they had to have a retention pond, so they will leave it there. They do not need to extend the parking lot. The owner of ATS stated at the end of the area where the retention pond is located, there is some gravel that is actually stopping the water from running into the pond. He is wondering if they can shovel some of it out of the way, so it will flow correctly. Rick Greenfield advised the petitioners the board can only address the variance being filed at this time. The petitioner would ask to go before the City of Beach Grove to a- address the retention pond. Remonstrators none. Recommendation by staff. Linda Allbran went over the staff report. Linda stated that the intersection of Arlington and Churchman bypass is a completely industrial area. There is no residential property in the area. Arlington Avenue is a secondary access, providing good access to multiple areas in the community. Also, access to the interstate would be down non-residential roads. Staff believes this industrial area is a good location for this type of business. The building and parking lot are already there, and they are not proposing any changes to it. Staff is recommending approval. Kathy Arsenal made a motion to grant the variance for ATS ambulance service petition twenty thirteen UVB dash oh oh five, located at sixty-fifty Churchman bypass. Joe Hag seconded the motion, which was approved by unanimous vo- uni- unanimous vote. Twenty thirteen UVB dash oh four, property located at five seventeen Main Street. Recommendation by staff. By staff, Linda Allbran stated that the variance was filed but never completed. The petitioner did not send out the necessary notices, so staff is recommending the board to dismiss the request. Clerk Treasurer McMillan asked for a voice vote to dismiss the variance for petition twenty thirteen UVB dash oh oh four. Rick Greenfield made a motion to dismiss the variance located at five seventeen Main Street. Diana Hendricks seconded the motion, which was approved by unanimous voice vote. Uh, reading of the minutes, reading and approval of the July thirteen, twenty thirteen minutes would be held at the next board meeting. Clerk Treasurer McMillan asked the board for approval to make a recommendation to Beach Grove City Council to increase the fee for filing a variance with the city. After board discussion, it was decided Clerk Treasurer McMillan would ask the city council for approval. Diana Hendricks made a motion for Clerk Treasurer McMillan to ask the Beach Grove City Council to increase the fees for filing a variance with the city. They will use the same fee schedule currently being used by the town of Lawrence. Joe Hag seconded the motion, which was approved by unanimous voice vote. Adjournment. Rick Greenfield made a motion to adjourn. Joe Hag seconded the motion, which was approved by unanimous voice vote. The meeting was adjourned at two fifty PM. The next meeting will be November fifth at Beach Grove City Hall Council Chambers. So, if I could get a motion to accept the minutes as read.
I motion to it.
Diane?
It says read.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Turn Joe.
Go ahead.
I'm glad we got that out of there.
Absolutely. That was a mouthful. Okay.
Good job, brother.
Thank you.
Need a glass of water or anything?
Yeah, I'm fine. Um, I don't know what else we might have on there.
I think that's it.
Linda, do you have any comments or anything?
Thanks for making me relive that.
Yes, it was a long meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that one.
It's gonna be a time.
Accept the motion to.
Yeah, yeah, that is.
Motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Joe, second.